Thank you very much. Welcome to Revere City Council. Today is December 9th, Monday. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Rigo?
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta?
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers? Here, Counselor Riordan?
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings of November 18th and November 25th, 2013.
Are there any corrections or omissions? Hearing is seen none. All in favor to accept. All opposed. Vote in so ordered. I would like to have a suspension of rules. Motion to suspend the rules. All in favor. All opposed. Vote in so ordered. We'll take up committee reports first. Counselor Riordan, please. Zoning.
Thank you, Council President Novoselfsky. This evening, the zoning subcommittee met at about 4:30 PM to consider two separate changes to the amendments to the zoning map. First was CZ-13-05, request by William Setapane for the amendment of Revere zoning map to include a number of different parcels, which I will not recite, but are on our agenda for this evening, changing the zoning designations from general residence RB to technology enterprise district, TED district. That proposal was approved and forwarded to the city council with a vote this evening unanimously by the zoning subcommittee and reported favorably out. So I'd ask that you take a vote on that matter.
On the recommendation of the zoning subcommittee on CZ-1305, on the second reading, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. On the third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. Roll call.
Roll call on engrossment and ordainment. Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, CZ-1305 has been ordered, engrossed, and ordained.
Vote in so ordered.
Second matter, Mr. President, is before is item number CZ-13-06.
Please go.
This is an application by Sterling Suffolk Racecourse LLC requesting amendment of the zoning ordinance of the city of Revere relative to PDD-1 district and the definition of gaming facility. Those matters are before this council. It's rather lengthy, proposed change to various dimensions, once again with the corollary that the amendment proposed by the city planner to section eight of the requested zoning change, and I believe this city clerk has suggested that we vote on that separately. But other than that, the zoning changes were, including that actually, the zoning changes reported favorably by the entire zoning subcommittee, and we would ask that you take a vote on that matter this evening.
Mr. President. Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, I stepped out of the room for one minute. Can I be recorded as a yes vote on calendar item number three?
So noted.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
I know calendar item number seven is a communication from the planning board. I'd like to be part of this particular vote.
So noted. Okay, at this point, ladies and gentlemen, we will vote first on the amendments to the zoning change. On the amendments. Roll call.
This is on the amendment to add at the end of section eight footnote U, where a lot within the PDD-1 district abuts another lot within the PDD-1 district, there shall be no setback required along such lot line for either lot. Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment has been accepted.
On the second reading, as amended, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. On the third and final reading for engross and ordainment, no. Third and final reading, as amended. Roll call. No. Losing this, guys. On the third and final reading on, third and final reading, as amended, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. On ordainment and engrossment, as amended. Roll call.
Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Absolutely.
Is that a yes? CZ-1306 as amended, engrossed and ordained.
CZ-1306 has been engrossed and amended and ordained and all that other stuff. Vote in so ordered. I knew we'd have a little fun out of this one, guys and gals. This time, do we want to do reconsideration, hoping that both will not prevail?
Suspend rules. We're already in suspension, Mr. President.
Yes, we will. That's why I just said, okay, do them separately.
Both for reconsideration with the hopes it does not prevail.
We'll do them separately. On CZ-1305, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. On CZ-13-06, as amended, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been a pleasure working with you. It is great. Okay, now, refer back to regular order of business. All in favor, all opposed, vote in so ordered.
Calendar item number one, joint meeting of Verizon, Comcast, and National Grid to discuss ongoing utility work.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask if you want to have discussions, please take them outside so we can continue our business. Okay, gentlemen, welcome back. Name and address for the record, please.
Stan Jusovich, Verizon, with offices at 63 High Street in Davis.
Tim Kelly, Comcast, having office at 55 Concord Street, North Reading, Massachusetts,
Dan Cameron, National Grid, with offices at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
Thank you, gentlemen. I know we didn't get a copy of the PLM this week.
I apologize for that, Mr. President.
Shame on you. Forty lashes with a wet noodle.
There we go.
Any issues with any of the counselors on my right? Double polls? That's what we're talking about. Double polls. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I have a couple. On Folsom Street, poll number 235691, has that been taken care of?
Excuse me, Counselor, the name of the street again? It's still on the list.
Any movement expected? Dan?
That's one that's still in our court. We can put a priority on that.
And also on Pomona Street, poll number 353774.
Yeah, it's Verizon, Paul in court. I'll see about, see if they could grab that sometime within the next few weeks.
And I noted to whoever may concern that there's about 10 streets on, 10 pole locations on Revere Street that still need attention, and primarily that one in front of the Parvius School is still hanging on to each other. It's like a lover's situation, one pole attached to the other, in front of a nice, beautiful building that we spent millions of dollars to make an aesthetic value to the neighborhood. That double pole doesn't help us any. That's right smack right in the middle of the Parvius School. Any help?
Can't tell from the list exactly which poll number it is. Some of them are in our court, National Grid, some of them are in, you know, other companies' courts.
Okay, so we'll identify, we'll identify the poll number. Counselor Janino, do you have the poll number on those?
Counselor Guanasso, I do not, but I know that I brought it before the board before, probably over a year and a half ago, at the start of the last school year, so hopefully that is addressed. So thank you for bringing up to it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Exactly why I brought it to the forefront tonight is how long is it going to take to get this resolved?
I know, Counselor, that poll was...
It's right in front of the school.
1045, I have 1044.
I believe that was the one we had, the, that off cable, that transmission cable?
Right.
Right? And there was an issue with that. I don't know who was responsible for that.
So I'd like to get the party who's still on there up here so that we can address this once and for all, as Counselor Janino stated. We've been waiting over a year and a half. That's pretty patient.
Yeah, we actually have contacted, I believe, the school department to see if they had any fiber that was attached. School departments do have their own Intranet, so I'll recheck that one.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President, you all set now? Cool. On my left, Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my way to the council meeting this evening, coming up Sagamore Street at the intersection of Sagamore and Revere Street, directly in front of number 460, Revere Street, there is a pole, the light is out, and I normally would phone that in, but I figured where you guys were going to be up here this evening, I'd mention that. I believe the pole is 1048, some bit, I'm not positive on that, but it's directly in front of 460, Revere Street, and that's an intersection there, which, there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of Sagamore Street, so it would be to the, in the public interest to, you know, get that light back on as quickly as possible. Thank you very much, sir.
Counselor Zambudo. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be obviously very brief. I have one trivial, not trivial to my constituent, but trivial to you probably. I have a pole on Fairfield between 66 and 76 Fairfield. It's across from 69 Fairfield. It's, we've changed the light bulb on it not long ago, so it's out again, so I believe it's a ballast. Now, we have sent that request in again, but I figure you might be able to speed up my replacement of that ballast. I appreciate it. There's no real number. It's got an H5 on the pole, but there's no real number. That's why I'm giving you the address. It's between 66 and 67, which sounds like 76 and 66. It sounds like a long distance, but it's really not. It's in between those two houses. Across from 69. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Counselor Riordan.
Mr. President, I have a bit of latitude. This really isn't a poll question, but I've been attempting to get Mr. Cameron's attention on a matter on Prospect Place that involves a streetlight. It's, Prospect Place is a development more or less at the top of, well, behind the nursing home on, well, on Prospect Place. There are some poles up there that are decorative, apparently, and I'm not sure whether the utility is responsible for them, caring for the light bulbs, or the city is. And I'm wondering if I could get some guidance on that. No one else, no one at this point has directed me. It's pole number one up there, and it's, it's on and off, is pretty much what it comes down to.
If decorative, maybe verify, but if the decorative lights, chances are, we don't own them.
It's not, well, again, not really decorative. It appears to be a rather stock plain light, but it's not an overhanging streetlight, is what I'm saying, I guess.
Yeah, we...
Would you have any, well, let me ask you this. Are you strictly confined to the overhanging streetlights that we see all over the city?
Pretty much, in newer developments. I mean, how old is the neighborhood?
Prospect Place has been up there about 15 years, right? 18 years, maybe?
But some of it's new, right?
This part of it, I would say, is at least that old, as old as the original development.
Yeah, we didn't have, now we have decorative lights for new residential developments, but chances are, if it's not a standard, what we call Cobra, the overhanging light, as you referred to it, on either a wood pole or an all-metal pole.
It's an all-metal pole, but it's, again, it's designed to be different from the rest of the lighting. If you could check on that for me. It's Prospect Place, yeah.
Counselor Guanasso.
I have a nagging question, Mr. President, with National Grid. It seems that we used to, and we have been told many times, that a truck goes around and notices all the lights that are out, but I can't tell you how many times I come down Revere Street and I traverse some of the streets, that these lights are out, and they're out week after week, and nobody's noticed these? So is that policy of the truck going around and seeing where the lights are out to replace those bulbs? Because it's, we rely heavily on well-lit streets during dark season, especially where it gets so dark around 4:00 now. Is that policy in effect?
Yeah, we have troublemen, what we call troublemen, which are experienced linemen that are on at night, and they're on for, the primary reason is to be on for in case there's an emergency. But when we don't have emergencies, they're patrolling the streets, particularly main streets, and if they do notice lights are out, either A to fix them, or B to report them if they need a detail, which is not safe for one person to report to fix themselves. But, you know, if a lot of emergencies, a lot of things going on, so we do rely also on the cities and towns, residents reporting them to our reporting system.
Okay, we can do that, because I don't want to be telling some of the residents, yeah, we do have someone, you know, National Grid Electric goes about and checks these things. If in fact that's not happening, then I'll tell them, call me or call the number that I'm going to give them to report the light out.
Right. Always report it.
Yeah, because I just, because we had it under control for a while there. Now, all of a sudden, I see this epidemic coming about us.
This is Revere Street?
It's all over, really, but Revere Street primarily, because I traverse it quite often. But it's many side streets, too.
Okay, because I know you obviously have some DCR streets here, too, and the policy there is, it's a shared ownership, so sometimes if you see lights that are out, it could be that it's a responsibility to DCR. We try to keep on top of that as well.
Oh, I understand, but I just wanted to know what the correct, what are we doing now, and now I know. Joint effort, both of us are doing it. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Counselor Correggio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, coming back, I don't know if it's your jurisdiction or not, coming back from Lynn into Revere on the Lynn Marsh Road, from the first bridge to Broadway Circle, there's about seven poles, lights are out. It's very, very dark. I mean, they reconstructed the highway, they did a nice job, but all the lights are just not working, so I don't know if that's your area, if you can make a note.
This is coming, can you describe that again, coming off the...
Coming from Lynn to Revere.
Okay, that whole area, how recent was this, when you were through there?
I was there about a couple of days ago, and every bulb, every light was out from the first bridge to Broadway Circle, you know, to Revere.
Because that area, there's a number of lights that are actually owned by the state, Mass Highway. We don't own them, and they fixed them. I got an email last week saying that they were all fixed, because we were getting a number of complaints about lights out in that area.
You might want to check it out. It's very, very dark. To me, it's dangerous.
Okay, well, what actual street is it on?
Lynn Marsh, the Lynn Marsh Road. 107.
Yeah, all right, we'll have it patrolled again, but there are a number of lights as you come up that bridge, especially the on and off ramps.
But it's on the Revere side. They've been out for quite a while. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. While I have you, I have four locations that I'm repeating. Pole 392 at the intersection of Ocean Ave and Beach Street, right by the banana boat. It's a double pole. There are no wires on it. I don't even see it on the PLM. I see 312. I don't know if that's correct.
We've had our crew go out to that location. I did give you an update on that last month. I'll dig it back up out again, but we have done all of those four locations and forwarded to the groups that, or the companies that have responsibility or wires still on.
There are no wires on it. I know that for a fact. It's been like that for five years, so it's...
It may not be our pole, but I will, I will dig that back out and send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I just want to see it gone. I don't care who does it.
I understand, yeah.
And the other one is pole 48 on the Revere Beach Parkway at the intersection of North Shore Road. Again, it's, nobody's on it. I believe we talked about that last time, and we thought maybe it was a National Grid pole. Dan?
Yeah, I'm just looking, Revere.
Revere Beach Parkway at North Shore Road, across from the Sunoco Station.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm looking at pole 727 on James Street, intersection of James Street and Florence Ave, again. And I'm still looking for a beginning of pole 1526 at 1740 North Shore Road. That pole was changed, was put in, the double pole was put in at least five years ago, and I know it's National Grid on the PLM, and there needs electricity, and the electric move first before anybody else, you know.
1526?
Pole 1526, yes. And the ball, it shows ball in the court, so. Those of mine for now, thank you for the light on Arlington Ave. The people are very happy up there. And other than that, any other questions from any of the counselors on this? Hearing is seen none, gentlemen, thank you. Happy New Year. It was nice working with you this year, and we'll see you after the first of the year. Thank you.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the petition of Verizon for two new pole locations on Rice Avenue as described in the petitioner's plan.
Applicants, please, and proponents.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, my name's Everett Bryan. I'm a right-of-way engineering consultant with Engineering and Data Solutions, representing Verizon New England at 459 Main Street in Saugus. Our petition this evening is to place two new poles and to upgrade two poles to existing poles. This work is necessary because the pole that provides service to three of these properties is currently located in the backyard where it needs to be relocated due to some construction of a garage and so forth. So these two new poles will continue service to number 157 and one, number 169 and number 143 Rice Avenue.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Hearing is seen none. Close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Hearing is seen none, and close that side of the hearing. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this has been an ongoing situation now for many months. There's a pole in the rear yard of a fellow named Robert McCush, who lives on Rice Avenue. He's looking to use that location for, to build the garage, I believe, where the pole is, and we finally come to the conclusion that the pole can be moved out of there, but Verizon has to install tunnel poles in that particular, on Rice Avenue. So it's also my understanding that they may have reached an agreement with another resident down there that would be willing to have that other pole, and give them an easement to put that other pole in his rear yard. However, what I would ask my colleagues to do is support this petition on behalf of Verizon this evening, so that we can get that pole out of there as quickly as possible. The gentleman's been waiting a long time, and I know Verizon has been working very diligently to affect the removal of that pole from the gentleman's rear yard, so with that said, I would ask my colleagues to approve this this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Hearing is seen none. On the petition to approve. Motion to approve.
Roll call on the petition of Verizon for the two new pole locations on Rice Avenue. Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas is absent. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Verizon's plan has been approved.
And Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, while Everett Bryan is here, and I have to...
Mr. Bryan, step forward, please.
Have the pleasure of having him. Could item number eight be taken out of order in order to be presented to Mr. Bryan?
Take it out of order?
Yes, please.
Motion number eight.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor requests National Grid to install a streetlight on pole number 1938 at the end of Stanton Ave at the corner of American Legion Highway as a matter of public safety.
Counselor Guanasso, in the nature of, can you help us with that National Grid pole with Verizon to establish that pole there?
I didn't quite get the location.
The location is pole number 1938 at the end of Stanton Ave in corner of American Legion Highway. Can you, representing Verizon, speak with National Grid? The pole is there. All we need is a new fixture.
For a streetlight.
Yes, please.
Yes, I will pass that on.
Thank you very much.
Good work. All in favor, all opposed, and vote in so ordered.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Henry Tufo to the planning board.
Counselor Guanasso, can we bypass that finale last week, in this week's last meeting, and we were trying to move things along? Can we bypass that and approve it tonight?
I have no objection. We also have someone as a constable that has to be appointed, too.
That's correct.
Is it the first time? If it's the wish of the council, because it is the spirit of the holiday, going against my better wishes, because I think, I feel very strongly, as you know, that subcommittees are established for one reason, for all, for everybody to see what's going on, to effectively institute transparency.
Counselor, if you wish to have a...
It's my wish to, no, I don't wish, but I will, I will, because it's the Christmas spirit, let it go forward, for both of those particular, but they have to be read out loud, so we know that they're notified.
So noted. Please read them out loud, please. Henry, Henry Tufo first. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Vice President.
Just a point of information. I have no problem with the reappointments, but new appointments, I do agree with Counsel Guanasso. That's the reason why we have a subcommittee, so I think that new appointments should have at least had the opportunity to come up tonight. Was the person even notified that we were...
They weren't supposed to come tonight. This is just the first reading. They would be called to the appointment subcommittee and then come up next week, and we'd vote on it next week, if that's...
Well, if we were planning on that, we should have given the option to come up tonight if they wanted to.
If you wish, I'm not... If you wish, I'm not, I don't want anybody to think, I'm just trying to move things ahead.
The truth would be...
If you want to have it next week, we'll have them both next week.
The truth would be said, we can do this in 15 minutes next week. Not a big issue. It's not controversial.
Appointment's at 5:45 next week.
5:45 next week. It's only 15 minutes.
I'm sorry, no problem, no problem. Just trying to move things along. With that, I've had a request from a constituent to say a few words. Mr. Camerata? Name and address for the record, please.
F. Camerata, 624 Malden Street, Revere, Mass. I just want to, I'm glad I had this. Oh, okay, thank you, President, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the city council. I received two citations for my birthday, and I won't mention the age, but I'm going to read it, okay? "I already thanked Mayor for his kind words and his citation in honor of my birthday. Thank you, Counselor Patch, and the city council for their citation and your kind words also. I was truly honored, as were my family and the wonderful friends at my birthday party." Once again, thank you very much. It was an honor to receive the citations, believe me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Happy birthday, Mr. Camerata.
Happy birthday, Vinnie.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business, do I have a motion adjourned? A motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, all opposed? Good evening.